All right, good evening, good evening, good evening. The time is now six oh three P M., and we are ready to start our regular scheduled meeting for March twenty third, twenty twenty three. Members of the public who desire to address the board on any topic related to board work unless sign the roster before six thirty P M. Is at the back of the room there. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes, to appoint a spokesperson if the concern is a group concern, and to supplement verbal presentations with written reports if necessary or desired. Personal attacks will not be allowed, although the board does not respond to any public comment. We will review the information presented and provide responses as needed. All right, and roll call will now be taken.
Mrs. English?
She's not with us. She's in session right now.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Frazier?
Here.
Mrs. Salazar?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Miss- uh, Mrs. Michelle Wills Hill?
Uh, she is out of town.
Um, Naeja Ali?
Here.
Candelaora Diniyo?
Here.
Very nice. Item two point three, we have our pledge of allegiance and reading of our mission statement. Uh, with us today for our pledge of allegiance, we have Talia Hayes. How are you today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hayes. And the reading of our mission statement, mission and vision statement. I have Amaya Cogdale, Isaiah Cordero, um, Marsha McLean, and Christopher Reynolds.
Graduate college and career-ready students with the knowledge, skills, attitudes, and behaviors to personally succeed and contribute to the common good.
Thank you so much, you all. Oh, we have gifts for you all. Sorry. They placed these up here for us. Uh, you all can come up. We have some Harrison, uh, fan wear and, uh, and... You guys can come on up. Yeah, yeah, come on, come on. And Ms. Hayes as well, if she's back. There she is. Very nice. We have a bag for you. If she was prepping for her dance, it might have been better to, to wait until that group comes. I did. I might have messed that up for her.
Ms. JJ, can you go back up with the students so we can get, grab, do we get a picture?
We'll, we'll do a group one when we get them all up. Yeah. There we go. All right. Item number three to adopt our agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda for this night?
Yes.
All right, very nice. And I would just need a motion.
Mr. President, I move to adopt the agenda of tonight's board meeting.
I second.
Motion by Mrs. Ms. Frazier, second by Mrs. Salazar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have ourselves a meeting. Item number four, showcasing our schools. And today for item four point one, showcasing Mount Vista Community School, we have Dr. Angela Valdez, who is the principal, uh, Dr. Nicole Paxton, and Mr. Aaron Van Walker, who are the A Ps at Mount Vista. How are you, how are you today?
Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Berhansel, members of the board. We are excited this evening to start the presentation with a new dance group we have at Mountain Vista. It is a Mexican folklorico group. I would like to introduce one of our staff members. Borina Vadoi in the very back. She had a dream about a year ago of having this group and making it a reality at Mountain Vista. The costumes and everything were done by a group of parents. And so prior to our presentation, we do have a, um, a presentation for all of you. So without further ado, we're going to start with the first song.
Dr. Valdez, they're not leaving yet, are they? Um, they might be. Can we grab a picture with them on the board before they leave?
Sure, let's grab them really fast.
Yes. The down button? Okay. Oh, okay. Okay, got it.
Hey, Ms. Vadoi? Ms. Vadoi? We, we want you in that picture as well. Those are your ladies, though, so. See, Angela is gonna do some corralling and make sure it's a nice, pretty picture. Very nice. There you go.
Yeah, ordering, it's all over, ordering. And you should see it pop over on the YouTube underscore ordering.
Parents, feel free. I know some of you in the back trying to reach over. Yeah, we got time. We got a little time. Yeah, get your pictures. Those are memories, good memories. Yes, ma'am.
I can't see you anywhere yet. That's why they gave you so much space. And you'll see a little video right there.
Yes, ready?
Very nice.
Okay, on three we'll say it, so, okay. Ready, one, two, three.
¡Eso!
All right, thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you so much to Miss Miranda Vadori, all the Falcory Go dancers, and all of the families who came to support the We're gonna go ahead and move into our presentation. I'm Angela Valdez, proud principal of Mountain Vista Community School. Just once again to introduce my admin team, I have Dr. Paxton, Assistant Principal, Mr. Aaron Vander Walker, Assistant Principal, and our literacy coach, Naomi Gray Fox. Instead of us as an admin team presenting this evening, we have asked for some of our students to present. So, we are going to step to the side, and some of our student leaders are going to come up and tell you about Mountain Vista. So, I would like to welcome the four of them up here.
Hello, my name is Marshawn McLean, and I will be presenting Mountain Vista's core beliefs. These core beliefs were, these core beliefs were discussed and incorporated to all the actions of the Mountain Vista team and their staff. We believe in success and nothing less. We develop students' hearts and minds through engaging academic in numerous content-rich opportunities to build the foundations necessary to be successful college and academic career-ready learners.
Hi, my name is Amaya Cogdell, and here at Mountain Vista, we have about ninety staff members. We have twenty-four general education teachers, thirteen special education teachers, six elective teachers, two school counselors, one social worker, one school psychologist, one health tech, three front office staff, fifteen paras, ABC clinic, we have one BCBA, three RBTs, one building engineer, and three custodians. And we have two speech and language teachers, and two occupational therapy specialists.
Hi, my name is Lealene. Here is our demographic data. There are a known amount of five hundred and eighty students at Mountain Vista, two hundred and sixty are in district choice, and sixty-six are out of district choice. For example, I am a part of the sixty-six out of district, out of district choice. My nearby school, community school, is originally Carmel, but I decided to go with Mountain Vista, and they proudly accepted me. So, our demographic data contains the amount of ethnicities at Mountain Vista, such as fifty-eight percent Hispanic, eighteen percent white, fourteen percent black, sixty percent two or more racist, three percent Asian, one percent American Indian, and Alaskan Native. Our demographic data continues, has free and reduced lunch for seventy percent of all students, English learners, ten percent of students are identified as NEP or LEP, special education moderate needs the TAP program, Communication and Social Development Program, and thirteen licensed special education teachers. Seventeen percent of, seventeen percent of students receive services through IEP, and six percent of students have been identified as gifted.
Hey, my name is Christopher Reynolds, and our achievement data is that elementary in ELA, both ELA and math have met expectations, middle school has exceeded expectations, and our multilingual learners have also exceeded expectations. Also, we are a performance school based on academics.
Here at Mountain Vista, we offer a variety amount of sports for our students, such as boys and girls cross country, co-ed tackle football, volleyball, girls and, boys and girls basketball, boys and girls soccer, co-ed wrestling, cheerleading, softball, and boys and girls track and field. We would love for you all to come out to support our boys' hockey team, track and field, and our softball team during their first games of the spring season. In addition to athletics, Mountain Vista also offers a wide variety of after-school clubs, such as yoga club, book club, and pod club. Here are some pictures of our after-school clubs and during school clubs.
Our student discipline is restorative justice, and it's mostly handled with the focus of restoring the relationship, the relational damage done by incident, and taking ownership for individual actions. We have RJ cases, for example, the one today was two individuals in seventh grade, and assault against another individual. So, we help them resolve their problems with them speaking through their own voices, and how they felt, and how they could prevent those actions again from occurring. We step, we step back from suspension, and we often give detention, like ISS, OSS. But other than that, restorative justice is a vehicle to let students solve their problems through their own voices.
And are you, are you one of the students who helps in the restorative justice practices? Because you kept saying "we," so I, I would assume that you partake in helping your fellow students.
Yes.
Yes, good for you. Yes, very nice.
Our suspension data, as you can see, near 2017 and 2018, we had a high number of suspension. But as you can see, we have grown as a school and have almost nearly twenty-five, which is a huge drop from a lot, from like three hundred.
Yes.
Also, our community partnerships help also our growth of our school, because it helps us have different opportunities for different kids, like the ECLC, or Education of a Lifetime, or the Boys and Girls Club.
Mountain Vista invited sixteen of our community, of our community to the Community CAF, where we had an opportunity to meet and discuss how our partners can support the needs of our school. They have provided lessons on healthy relationships for students, college, and career commitments, for participation for staff and students and community outreach projects.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for listening to our presentation. We are proud to be Mountain Vista. Ay los so de ser Mountain Vista.
Questions?
I have no questions, just remarks. Our students are outstanding, aren't they not? Yes, they are. Yes, they are. We are building many community leaders amongst us, from the youngest to the oldest. What grades do you guys represent? All eighth. Very nice. So, these guys will be high schoolers pretty soon, and the possibilities are endless. They're doing amazing work already with your restorative justice. What other programs are you guys in? Okay, all right. Okay, Avid as well. Our Avid program in this district is phenomenal, state-recognized. We are amazing here. Ms. Valdez, you're doing an amazing job. Your APs as well. I'm sorry that I didn't jump up there in the photos with you guys. You see, they gave me distance. I got a cough today, so everybody's like, back up, you know? But you guys did a phenomenal job. I'm so proud of you guys. Did we, we did give you guys bags? Okay, we are good there, and the twenty, we got them as well. Thank you, parents, for bringing all your students out here with us tonight. We truly, truly appreciate you guys, and you are who we work for. So, thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, so much. Yes, yes, let's get a, let's get a
Students, I just want to tell you thank you for embracing who you are and not hiding who you are, because we need who you are. Okay? We need who you are, so be proud of who you are and keep it up. I'm so proud of you, and I can't wait to see you in high school next year.
Very nice. Yeah, bless.
Picture.
Gotta do the last one.
Dr. Valdez, where might you be going? All of you are in the picture.
Yeah.
Okay.
We need the admin as well, yes. Very nice, very nice. All right, we will move right along to item number five, communicating with the public. Item five point one, public comment. Members of the public who desire to address the board on any topic related to boardwork are welcome to do so at this time. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. To appoint a spokesperson if the concern is a group concern, to supplement verbal presentations with written reports if necessary or desired. Personal texts will not be allowed, although the board does not respond to any public comment. We will review the information presented and provide responses as needed. I have Miss Elise Berheim. Berheim, it's an H, I am so sorry. And Brooke Bolin. All right.
All right.
Okay. Now, if they are listed in the same box for the same topic, so will just one of you be speaking, or? Okay. So, you'll state your name, you'll state your topic, and then your time will begin. Norma will keep your time, and she'll let you know when that three minutes is up, okay?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Elise Berheim. I am a science teacher at Fox Meadows Middle School, and today Yes, absolutely. Does that work better? Okay. Do you want me to repeat that? Okay, my name is Elise Berheim. I am a science teacher at Fox Meadows Middle School, and today I'm going to be talking about the policy titled Support of Transgender Students. All right. So, first of all, I want to thank you for this opportunity for us to bring you our concerns. I am here today with teachers from Fox Meadows Middle School to gain clarity on the implementation of policies regarding our transgender students. At Fox Meadows Middle School, we are told that if a student wants to go by the pronoun or name that aligns with their gender identity in the classroom, we must inform the parents. We believe this goes directly against our support of transgender student policy. I want to draw your attention to the Support of Transgender Student Policy Code ACE three, and specifically under the section titled Areas of Support. The first paragraph states, "All students have a right to privacy, including the right to keep one's transgender status private at school. School personnel should not disclose medical or other information that may reveal a student's transgender status unless legally required to do so, or unless the student is authoring such disclosure." I would also like to read paragraph five under Areas of Support. "Every student has the right to be addressed by the name and pronoun that corresponds to the student's gender identity. A court-ordered name of gender change is not required, and official records need not be changed." By telling the students that they need to, that their parents are going to be told what their gender identity is at school, we believe that this does not keep students safe, especially if they do not have a safe home life. This unfortunately leaves them with a, no place to really be who they really are. And so, by telling the parents, we really feel that the school is stepping in in a place where it should be the student's right to tell their parents when they are transitioning. These teachers behind me, and I believe that with the way we're implementing our Support of Transgender Student Policy, it is not following, first of all, following our own policy, because it isn't keeping them safe, and more importantly, not protecting our trans students' privacy or safety.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And though we don't respond to the topics that are being discussed, thank you all for what you do in our district. We do appreciate you guys as teachers, and we do take your concerns very seriously. Thank you. All right. I will move right along to item five point two, with recognition of awards. And in keeping with the celebration of March as Women's History Month, it is my great pleasure to introduce to you a group of outstanding women who have brought honor and recognition to our school district through their remarkable achievements. These women have worked tirelessly to excel in their respective fields, and their dedication and hard work have not gone unnoticed. Today, we have the privilege of celebrating their success and recognizing their contributions to our community. Please join me in welcoming these incredible women to the podium today. Dr. Wendy Berhansel, Colorado's 2023 Superintendent of the Year, Miss Rachel Lawfer, 2023 Rising Star, named by Media 6035, Dr. Angela Valdez, Colorado's 2023 Elementary Principal of the Year, and Dr. Anna Dyckman, Black Caucus Education Champion of the Year. And Dr. Anna Dyckman, Black Caucus Education Champion of the Year. These are a little wet. For you, Dr. Berhansel. Thank you for leading us. And Ms. Lawfer. And Dr. Dyckman. Our award from Black Caucus as well as...
Mr. President, I'd just like to make a few comments.
Of course.
For those who are observing our meeting this evening, take a good look, please turn this way. Take a good look at the talent, skills, and abilities that exist within Harrison School District Two. We really appreciate you. Flowers, you know, that's what we did, but if we could do more, we would. But please, everyone, just acknowledge these talented young women. Thank you so much for all you do.
And I will just add a little bit there, this is the tip of the iceberg. These four ladies here, because you saw those young women who came in behind them, they will one day fill these same seats, so that is the tip of the iceberg right now. So proud to be HSD too. Oh my goodness, we have more! Alright, Joyce?
The pictures that Joyce has, Ms. Salazar has, are pictures from the CASE Awards Ceremony that we had at Sierra High School for Dr. Berhansel.
Very nice.
Alright, ready, one, two, three. Thank you.
Oh, you dropped something, ma'am? Ms. Bowlin, there you go.
Thank you.
Alright.
Came from soccer.
Alright, to continue right along, item number six, communicating with the board. Item six point one, Student Board Rep Report, we have Ms. Naeja Ali and Ms. Candelaora Dinesio.
So Naeja wasn't able to make it to yesterday in today's event. We, six students from Harrison and then six students from Sierra, except for one student from Sierra was from CRA, which is the Career Readiness Academy. We went up to Denver and we got to go and see the Capitol. We got to also visit with Senator Exum and House Representative Ms. Regina English, and that was really nice and we just kind of got to explore how the Capitol worked. We got to sit in and listen to different things that happened in the senators' chambers. We got to sit in and listen to different things that were happening in the House of Representatives, different bills that were going through legislation, and that was really cool to be a part of. I really enjoyed it a lot and especially since I want to go into politics, it was great and very insightful for me and all the other students as well. There has also been a lot of controversy going on within legislation and so there was a lot of students from Denver who actually went up to the Capitol today to talk with legislation about the different shootings that have been happening at East High School in specific. And I thought that was really cool to see an in-person way of showing this community support and just being there for one another and also to show how different laws need to change as well.
Very nice, thank you. And for those who are listening, our hearts are with those families who are affected by those events that happened on yesterday. We as a community, as educators and advocates for our children, that definitely strikes the heart. And so our hearts and prayers are with everyone who was affected on yesterday. I will move right along to item number seven, Board Consent Agenda. And these items have already been discussed and the work has been done. Item seven point one, Approval of Boardwork Session, February 2nd, 2023, and Board Meeting Minutes, February 16th, 2023. Item seven point two, OE 10, Communicating with the Public Monitoring Report, March 23rd, 2023. Seven point, item seven point three, OE 9, Communicating with the Board Indicator Report, March 23rd, 2023. And for item seven point four, I would just need a motion.
I move to approve the Board Consent Agenda.
I second.
Motion by Ms. Frazier, second by Mrs. Salazar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Items so moved. And item number eight, Superintendent Consent Agenda. Item eight point one, March Personnel and Comparison Report. Item eight point two, January 2023 Financial Report. And item eight point three, I would just need a motion.
I move to approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda.
I second that.
Motion by Ms. Frazier, second by Mrs. Salazar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Items so moved. Moving along to item number nine, Monitoring Board Performance. Item nine point one, Annual Work Plan. Don't think we have any changes, but we do have some dates that are coming up that are going to be added to that, okay? And with no changes to that work plan, I will move along to item nine point two, Legislative Updates. And do we have any as of late?
I'm still waiting for the Final Finance Act to come through. I think most concerning right now is some of the education discipline bills that are coming through, particularly on the Senate side, limiting what students could be held accountable for. And we know that we opposed the expulsion bill, they went back to rewrite it and now we're opposing it again. It's not, it's not going to keep schools safe and that's our number one criteria, so... It seems like there's a lot of people who want to fix discipline in schools but don't have the data of why they're putting that bill out there and they're going to make schools less safe of what we can do and so we will continue to oppose anything that limits our ability to keep our students safe.
Thank you, Dr. Berhansel. Alright, and we will move along to item number 10, to adjourn, and for item 10 point one, I would just need a motion.
I move to adjourn the Board of Education meeting.
I second.
Motion by Ms. Frazier, second by Mrs. Salazar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. For all of you that are still with us, safe travels home this evening. Thank you for being with us tonight and have a good, have a good spring break, there we go. Also, I didn't want to upset those students by making them sick during spring break, so that's why I stayed out of those pictures, I was like, oh man, they're going to be upset with me next Monday! Oh my goodness! But you guys be safe in your travels.